...of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda, we need to amend the agenda. We do not need to include the executive session this evening. So someone would like to include that exception in the motion, how are we approaching this?
I'm going to amend the agenda, excluding the executive session.
Second, first and second, all those in favor? Six zero. David, do you have any other comments?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda.
I'm going to defer to the general items, eight three each.
Second, all those in favor? Six zero. Old Business approved 2021/22 handbooks for Cooper Early Education Center and Opportunity Academy. And this is something that was presented to us at the previous meeting.
This one, yes.
It's a long time ago.
Six years ago.
Are there any questions or comments about those? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to clear the 2021 and 22 Cooper Early Education Center staff handbook, Cooper family handbook, and Opportunity Academy student handbook.
Second. Six zero. Energy Solutions Professionals for Energy Studies.
The side here is, I'm talking about in terms of becoming more energy efficient and finding partners that can help us identify ways to help pay for some of the infrastructure needs that we need, but also cut our costs, pay for those infrastructure needs with the cost savings from the, from implementing the energy solutions. So with us here tonight is Dr. Ray from Energy Solutions, provided that you all have any questions, you don't have to have questions, but if you do, maybe what this study entails, he's here to give you a little bit more detail on that if you prefer.
Are there any questions? I'm wondering.
This will just give us, give us the capacity to, to figure out what sort of options we're going to have for HVAC, which would be an L E D light, some of our HUS dollars, which is a little bit later on in the agenda, but also some other options like LED lighting switches and things like that in a previous district that I was associated with and also working with other individuals, other companies like Dr. Ray representing, you know, you get a lot of energy savings that can be realized through one of those switches. So this will help us do that in a way where we're not overtaxing maintenance crews and provide some financial options as well.
If there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion for this.
I'm going to improve the energy solutions professionals as a member of the energy cost savings.
All those in favor? Six zero. What security do you have in mind?
Okay, well, this is the process. So as of this morning, they went ahead and began taking out some of, and doing some of the renovating that they need to do to put in the new security cameras, the new security system. So they started with Chisholm this morning, and they're going on to Slate Creek. And then in the notes, I went ahead and put the work order of what schools are happening after that. And the big thing to know is that hopefully we're still on track, because they just started, but we're on track for them to go ahead and be finished by the start of school. So real happy to share that, and so far, so good.
David, thank you so much, and this has been a long time coming. It's nice to see you again. New property insurance premium update.
All right, this one is, uh, it's, it's what it is, but basically our insurance rates are going to be going up for our property insurance, about 39%. And I know a lot of folks probably, especially from home, are going, oh my gosh, what happened? Why did the rates jump that high? The reality is, is that, well, even from working with our assessor or our provider, is that they couldn't remember when someone actually physically went around and looked in each one of the buildings. And so when you don't do that for quite a while, then you tend to become underinsured. And what our concern was, was being underinsured, knowing where we live, we live in Kansas, and knowing the nature of things, that we felt that we definitely wanted to not let that error, or if it was an error, just not let that continue to get any worse, and make sure that we had the full value of the properties covered. And so this is what came back to us, and so we're, we are budgeting for it. And it is something that I think gets the district up in current, and will resolve that issue moving forward.
Are there any questions or comments before the end?
I've got one question. Is it the same carrier that we're dealing with with the insurance? Or is it a different agency?
It's a different agency, yeah.
Both of them were underwritten by Conrad.
Right, right. Conrad is the broker.
And then you have an agency, the rest are different ones than the one that did roof you.
Right. So this agency that's doing this is called KEMP, and the one that's involved with the roofing issue is Wright Insurance.
David, how often do you make them out and assess the property?
So I think the standard, yeah, I think the standard industry practice is around every five years, but that hasn't, that really hasn't happened for one reason or another. And, you know, I, I can also see from a district standpoint where you really, I mean, it's, it's nice to not have the higher premium, so you can save a little bit on budget, but it's just you're, you're gambling a little bit with, you know, if something does happen, then we wouldn't get the full cost to replace it. Like I believe, and then I'm going to say something, but I think on this building alone, I mean, it was, it was more than 50% of their value. So this building we're taking out, I think they were going to, we had to insure it for like a million and a half, which you can tell just by looking at it, it's gray, it's the way it's built, you know, you wouldn't be able to replace this for a million and a half dollars. So we feel like the rates are closer now to where it would actually be the replacement cost, and some other things are driving it. There's been high claims, not necessarily with us, but just around the nation, and then the cost of building materials. So all that's kind of snowballing and adhered in.
There's none other questions? Then this item, did you, David, please, please? S R relief, please.
Fred and I are going to do this, I thought a little more detail later, but I'll just tell them.
This will be, when you get done with your piece, I'll jump in.
Okay. So on the good side of things, we did receive a letter that's telling us what our S R $3 are, and they're surprising we were a lot more than what we thought it would be. So the district's looking to receive $5,139,884 in S R 3 relief, which we're really excited about that. And Fred's going to go into a little bit detail later about what our plan is, but generally speaking, that's, that's money that's going to help us reintroduce students back into face-to-face classrooms, as well as help us upgrade some of our systems that need to be upgraded in terms of HVAC, and really take some of those needed steps that we need to, to get a better, safe environment for students. So we're really pleased with that amount that we were given, our plan to get. And so, again, thank your legislature, or thank whoever you need to, but it's definitely something that's very welcome these times.
Just to look at, I placed a couple of sheets on your, on your desks or on your places. One's a spreadsheet, well, both of them are spreadsheets, one of them has color, the other one does not. The one that doesn't have any color is, is one that I would have emailed to all of you board members, I believe it was on Thursday or Friday, I can't remember, the days run together. What I included on there, if you look at the very top four rows, is anybody else getting the feedback? Another thing too, we looked at was hiring additional aides to serve as social, emotional, or academic support, depending upon what is needed in the building. For example, we already have a couple of buildings that have added or taken one of their aides and repurposed them to staff a social, emotional support room. All right, so in that particular case, that building could use that, that aide position to, for academic enhancement if they wanted to. So these were all needs that the buildings felt for that three-year period that they could really use, and, and I obviously agree, because this, this is a really good system to set up when you have the dollars. Another thing that could potentially happen with the mental, with the, the social worker liaisons and case management, is if the state does fund that, like say next year, which they, they very possibly could, then we could possibly jump in on that, and they would fund three-quarters of the salaries of those liaison, and also that grant would pick up the case management. There's no guarantee that they would do that. I was hoping, because I waited on that this spring until I found out they weren't going to fund it, so I wanted to shift it to this direction, if it's, if it's positive. Social, emotional curriculum and other supplies, I, I just set aside a dollar amount there, doesn't mean that we would spend that, but they could use that for outfitting some of those rooms with manipulatives and things of that nature, or exploring some curricular options, which some buildings have curriculum right now, Second Step is a real popular one throughout the state, but not all buildings have that. And I think that would be, for sure, we need to look at having a consistent curriculum across the district that's in relation to social, emotional learning. And then also social, emotional training. I just put 20 grand in there, and we'll talk about how that's changed from this sheet, which we're representing next year's, that I'll go over in just a second. For academic support, looking at before and after-school support, so each one of the buildings would have the ability to enrich their after, after-school academic support programs. A lot of them had them this past year with some at-risk funds. This would be able to allow us to expand those, so each facility would have that offering. We look at summer school support again, offering that over the course of the next three summers. I've got just $150,000 in there, doesn't mean it would cost that. I put that move to competency-based learning. This is something over the course of the year, that as a board, I would like for you folks to consider. It's what we have, what the state has been pushing for the last year or two in terms of that move. If you remember, when COVID hit us this past year, the state spent a lot of time in developing the competencies, or isolating what they call the critical competencies, or something to that effect, about the essential standards that we should be, we should be teaching towards. Then going to a more competency-based environment. For the summer recovery that we have in place, as you know, the last eight days or six days, we've had the Marzano Academies in providing competency-based training, and we're going to utilize that in that program. We do have several other teachers that are participating in that training. From elementary all the way up through high school. So I, I just wanted to reserve that as a placeholder. If we wanted to jump into that realm, we would, we would do that as a group. It wouldn't be, okay, August 1st or August 6th, during our initial meeting with staff, we're going to become a Marzano Academy school. That's not how I want to do this. But I want, I do want to have enough dollars set aside, where if that's a direction that, that we feel like we should be going for our kids, that we have that capacity. We've got three years in which we could spend dollars in order to do that. I have materials and supplies there. That would be paying for some of the materials, for some of the after-school and summer school support programs, and then extend eight times the supervision and services. If you remember, this past year, we expanded the eight times to seven hours per day, that was around $60,000 for all of the classroom aides. Now, I don't have that accounted for in the sheet with the yellow, and I'll, and I'll, one of the reasons I don't is, I know that when we, we gave you guys the budgeted amounts for the summer recovery, we were going to use CARES dollars, right? We would not have expanded all of those CARES dollars yet because there's not near as many people participating, and we knew we wouldn't have as many as what we had budgeted for within that training. So my hope is that we could use what's left over from the CARES dollars, or the S R 1, whatever you want to call it, to be able to be used in that capacity. You get the salary enhancement, and it really, initially, when they came out with the regulations, they said we couldn't use that to prop up any sort of salaries. About two or three weeks ago, there was a switch made. It was really interesting how that switch was made. We were actually in a webinar where they were going over the, how we could do capital projects like HVAC and stuff like that with, with the bond, oh, not with a bond, with a company that specializes that, because if you remember, we have to do a bunch of special things in order to do the HVAC and other types of construction with the federal dollars. There's just a bunch of, not silly rules, but there are a bunch of silly rules that we have to follow in order to be able to do that. During that, during the break between the morning and the afternoon session, there was a release that said we can give premium pay, they call it premium pay, out of some of these funds. Okay, so, you know, we can set aside up to 200, well, we can set aside whatever dollar amount that the board wants to set aside for that premium pay. I just put $275,000 once again as a placeholder. Okay? Then I have also that nurse, once again, we will see how much money we have left over. We would extend that nurse for one more year, possibly two, but for sure, one more year, as we said in the review last year. We look at technology, I have the hot spot subscriptions, the continuation of those, and then also software continuation for the next three years, for the different types of software that we purchased this past year. Okay? Now, when you go to this sheet that's got the yellow, and this is a lot of stuff, and I know that it can be real confusing, and I'm not trying to make it confusing, but what I did was essentially take the S R $2, the dollar amount, which is that $2,288,606, and I applied that towards several, almost all of those items, with the exception of the nurse, and then the extended times for, for aides. Applied those dollar amounts to that, this would be the initial S R 2 application that we would submit. There's a lot more that goes into that, but if you look on the right-left side of that, where it says like, for example, at the top, number 14, inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, yada, 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 okay? That's, that's the category that it refers to. The next column, that's just the description of what we're going to do, provide HVAC update, system upgrades, for a total of $842,000. So that would be what we would spend out of the S R 2 with this plan, out of S R $2. So it's not quite half, okay? Because then I have the, the mental health liaisons, the supports, then I have also the after-school programming, the summer school activities, the media or public materials and supplies budget. Then you go all the way down towards the bottom, where I have premium pay for staff, then I have renewed subscription for the Kajin hotspots. I had $131,000, for example, in my original, but today we found out that would be 75 grand, so that's more money that we could shift up for some professional development costs, and also to enhance HVAC, and then also purchasing the educational technology and software. So the way this works, we have to submit our application to the State Department of Education. There's a group that, that evaluates the application and, you know, gives it their tentative approval, or they make calls back to us and say, hey, we want clarification. What do you mean by contract with Central, with the CMHC? What does that mean? And we would just have to provide that, or they'd say that's not allowable, we don't consider that to be an allowable expense, and we'd have to make an adjustment. Once that committee gives us their approval, it then goes on to the State Board of Education for their approval. Then we can start to get reimbursed for the expenses that we put out. So we would have to incur the expenses and apply for the reimbursement, but our plan has to be approved first. Okay? So I guess what I, what I am asking from you, or David and I am asking from you, is, are you, are you okay with the direction we're heading in terms of the things that we are, we are wanting to get for, for, for our students and for the schools? It's a lot. It's a lot to digest.
I'll give you guys a couple of minutes to think, because Fred and I have been talking about this for a while now. So I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
You may not know this one. So what is kind of an estimated timeframe of when we would get approval from the State Board of Education? When will we know?
We should know by the end of July, okay, it just depends. If I can get this in by the end of June, they might be able to prove that by the end of the week, but it may, it may have to go to the, to the August. We should know by the end of August whether or not they approve. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hire anybody, you know, or proceed until we've got approval, obviously. Since it's a reimbursement situation, I'm, I'm kind of okay with that, you know what I mean? Because we have enough contingency, we wouldn't spend like the $800,000 for the HVAC right away, obviously, but we could get to where we could hire some of those, the mental health people and stuff like that. So I'm okay with doing that even later, advertising in late July, early August, and then making those higher, because we just have a lot of work to do in job description perspectives and stuff like that.
So wait until we have approval before hiring?
Oh, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, yes.
Another question I have, so we submit this application, which is still somewhat vague, but specific at the same time, I know that was a bad explanation. How much room do we have to make change as this time goes on, if we realize, you know, we need to put more into this area, or we don't need quite as much? If this has been approved, what are we allowed to change?
One of the things, we, we can change this as well, okay? This would, this would account for all of our S R 2 expenditures, but none of our S R 3. So we would have total flexibility with that $5.2 million, $5.139 million. If we decided, hey, you know, we don't want to, for example, we don't want to fund the, the third year of the mental health liaisons, it's just not looking out at the second. We just make a revision to the plan, okay? Even if, as it relates to this, if there was something later on, like, you know, I have that $80,000 for the competency-based training for, from the Marzano Academies, if we decide, for example, like in December or January, or whatever, as, as an organization, we don't want to go down that road, okay? We would just resubmit, or we would, we would submit an updated application, and they're coming up with procedures for that. So we have the ability to back up and do that. When you're saying it's vague, you're right. When you go and look at the, the plans of the state, you can go to the state website, I always got to figure out how to get there, but you can find out what of plans were approved, and how they actually worded some of those things. The columns on the very far left-hand side, that's a drop-down menu that, that was equivalent to the categories. The, the verbiage in the description, well, that's just stuff that, that I would place in there, but seriously, I'm not going to, I'm going to steal everything I can from other districts that have already submitted similar things. If, if we're putting stuff into support schools, so it's to support kids, they're not going to balk at that kind of stuff. The, the social, emotional piece, number, number 10, is, is very generic, just provide mental health services and supports. I mean, that's all there is to that, whereas you look at most of the other things, you know, they're, they're a little bit more descriptive than what, what they're asking for. So, and I will tell you that, that that piece is, to me, very important, because that's one of the things that we have said all along, is a lot of our kids are struggling from the mental health perspective. That takes, that takes pressure off of our social workers to make those connections with, and they won't serve in the capacity of trying to help arrange case management or arrange services to be outside.
I did not mean that in a critical way, David.
Oh, no, no.
I think it has to be, because you can't narrow it down so specific.
I did not take it.
Good, because there will have to be changes, obviously, as we go along. I can't really spend a lot of time on this. Thank you, I know this is a lot of work.
The premium pay for staff is one thing that we'll have to go through the negotiation process on the future side. And when you do the math on that, that's around $290 per full-time employee, if you were to give that premium pay, so.
Are you reading my notes on my computer? It's about, it's my third question. Have you hacked my computer?
I haven't yet. I haven't yet. Solar Wind Sac is, I'm not, I'm not a part of that group yet. That's my retirement plan.
I know, that's.
But, but that's a real big number two, you know, I mean, that's one of those things, we can decide, okay, instead of 275 grand, if you want, put 200 grand, or 225 grand, or something like that, take some more off of the HVAC piece to move that stuff around, okay? I mean, we, we have latitude to make those changes.
So Fred, if I bring this right, but the only additional staff is the three social workers?
And also classroom aides, too. Those would be additional staff.
So you're, you're expanding the numbers?
We would expand the number of classroom aides. We would essentially give, there would be eight or nine, and I always forget, I'm thinking it's eight, because two of them didn't need, didn't need an additional aide. And it may be actually seven physical aides, and then with one of the buildings we're working with, the high school, actually looking to change their SIP process or G E I process a little bit, to where we actually pay out some stipends for that, or a SIP team. So we've got, we've got some things we're reworking there.
So when you, you tell these people we plan this to be a three-year plan?
Yeah, yeah. With age, it's a little bit easier to map, because you have turnover in age, you know, more so than some of the other positions.
And then as far as, is this going to end up with, as it's additional work for our mental health provider locally? provider locally, can you think, I mean, are they going to have that additional?
Yes, they will, yeah.
And are you visiting?
Oh, yeah, I have a meeting again with Perry View tomorrow, we've had two or three meetings already, because I started talking about this some time ago, because, like I said, what my hope was, that the state would have funded that mental health initiative team grant, but they didn't, so we're going down a very similar path. Doing it this way, though, it does give us more flexibility in terms of what that liaison will do. For example, we would have one liaison stationed at the high school, that person would not only serve as liaison, they would serve as the G E I coordinator as well, the sit team coordinator, so we would have more leeway with what we do in those positions this way. But the problem, the problem with any of this, is like you said, after three years, they're gone, all right? And so, you know, what you hope is that we've done enough work from a professional development and other perspective, that we don't need that much support, but I can't guarantee that that would be the case.
And I like the part about HVAC, I think it's very wise, I don't know if you heard, we had a little problem passing bonds around here, so, you know, this could be helpful.
I think the paper had a couple of sources about that.
So this could be quite helpful for a big new gap.
Well, as Valerie and I talked, and I initially had half going to the HVAC, but then as I started looking at some of those other things, you know, that's still a pretty good chunk to give a score.
I have a follow-up to Matt's mention of resourcing for you, actually, because I know how busy they are right now. Mental health is my field, so I know, I love that it's in here, I think it's so important, I'm just a little bit worried about how much is going to overload them, because I already know they're very busy, and finding social workers is going to be kind of a difficult right now, honestly. But I love the trauma-informed approach to the training, so it's beautiful, I think that's amazing. I just kind of have thought about the Perry View thing, if they're able to handle that much.
And that's one of the things, you know, that they, I honestly don't think we would have it fully in place, really, until probably second semester, because they have to gear up, they've got a hundred-four case management, they have to provide that training, so we're meeting again tomorrow to see whether they can pass you.
Would Perry be able to get trauma-informed training?
Not necessarily. In fact, if, a couple of weeks ago on the weekly note, we talked about how we want to kind of change some of our professional development around, we already reached out to ESDEC for social-emotional support and training, Green Bush has some great stuff, too, we've reached out to them, and we have other individuals we're reaching out to to see if they can provide some of that training. Because the goal is, seriously, is to make sure that we have our staff, the magic is going to happen in the classroom, it's not going to happen with a social worker talking to a kid one hour a week, right? It's going to happen with that training that we provide for our staff and then working with those students, so we've really got to spend a lot on professional development so that can happen. And we've got to have some outcomes, and to find outcomes, too, so that we know that it is. Yeah, I'm kind of worried about it, too, you know, we'll just start someplace new.
Only four social positions, you're like, is there?
Three.
Three, okay. Is there none, do you think this is double?
We should, that position has been offered, I don't think it's on, it wasn't on our list tonight, because it was like Friday or over the weekend it was offered, so, three, yeah. And this is a bachelor level position, so, not that it'll be easier or anything like that, but. And we could also look to other councils, we could look at retired school councils, too, to serve that capacity, we really could, so, we have some options.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Fred, when you say that we can extend it an updated application, so it doesn't necessarily have to be in this category to maybe move around to a different category?
Yes. Because you've got to remember, they came out with this S R two stuff, I can't remember when it was, it's all running together a little bit, but a bunch of these districts have already, several districts have already submitted plans for the S R two funds, and that was before they found out about premium pay a few weeks ago. So a lot of districts are going back and reevaluating what it is they're doing. I've not been in a hurry, because I wanted to find out what the rules were, and I also want to, I'd rather go a little bit slower and not have to do it more than 15 times.
So on the topic of premium pay and that being an item for negotiating agreement, I think it would be safe to say that all that's involved in that would like to see that worked out sooner rather than later, finish negotiations sooner. In the event that we don't, or that it exceeds our time, are we still just going to submit this amount and adjust from there?
We could adjust from there, and then we would have to maybe start looking to tap into S R three dollars if it's more than that. You know, that's a pretty good chunk of that. But we also have to remember, we didn't give raises other than seven column last year, so that's one of the things, too, if we were to do this, we would not put this into the salary schedule. My suggestion would be to, you know, cut a check in November, that one-time thing, so they can have some extra Christmas money, frankly, because you still got to take tax out and all that other stuff, so.
Are there any other questions, comments?
I guess the question is, do you have any issues with me heading in this direction?
I don't, I can all echo what Matt said about the HVAC, that whole, that's going to relieve some pressure elsewhere.
What scares me about that is we've got the Business Solutions Professionals guys in here at the same board meeting where we're talking about that we approved that, so we think, how much money am I going to be able to tap into?
That's okay, we'll remember his face from today, we're prepared.
Now, we're excited about this, we really are.
I, no, I don't have any problems with this at all, I expect that we'll make revisions as we go along, and I'm not proposing any tonight, but I know that we'll be flexible with this, so thank you, David and Fred and other staff that had to put on that, I know that it's not bad to have extra money to work with, but it's a lot of extra things to do, so, thank you. Okay, on to new business, approved gift requests.
We would like to approve the gift request listed here and the generosity of the donations.
Do you want to make a motion for that? Did you make a motion?
I did.
Sorry. There a second? Sorry.
I'm a gentleman.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor? Six, zero. Our next item is approved removal of all COVID-related policies and restrictions for USD 373.
I move to approve.
No discussion, hey!
I'll catch you afterwards.
My bad, I'll listen.
You can go ahead with the discussion afterwards, I'll get it, all right. This girl can talk anytime, knock your stuff out. Proceeding.
I move to approve the removal of the COVID-related policies and restrictions for USD 373.
Second. Fred, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just one thing to add, at the Thursday webinar of this past week, it was related to us that we do have to have some sort of a COVID reentry plan in order to qualify for these S R plans, so we're going to wait later on for State Department of Education guidance. It can be, hopefully it'll be simple, I think there's a webinar, I think on Wednesday I'm supposed to listen to now, that gives us some guidance as it relates to that, so. Hopefully it's as simple as, we're going to keep an eye on numbers, we'll keep everybody safe, I know it won't be, but hopefully it's going to be simple.
Are there any other comments, discussion, question? If not, we will vote all those in favor. Six, zero. Approved Opportunity Academy Early Graduate Request, please have one this evening.
I would to approve Early Graduate Request from Opportunity Academy students.
Second.
All those in favor? Six, zero. Approved removal of special hiring incentives.
I'll move to approve the removal of special hiring incentives for select USD 373 positions.
Second, second.
This was the, if you remember, several months back, when we were running into a little bit of trouble trying to get new people to get hired into the district, get them interested, COVID was kind of running its course, and people were kind of scared to be around the schools, then we came up with this idea to give a hiring, which essentially is a hiring bonus to people in certain fields, like help in our food service, transportation, and then in addition to that, people that are employees could get some type of bonus to, to referring people that we kept them on for six months, so. Basically, and the kind of what's in the notes here is that that helped us bring in 35 new employees and 22 employees took advantage of the referrals, and what the cost of that program was, around $18,300. But as it's, I think we're over the part where we really needed it, and as things start to return back to normal, that's kind of one of those where we're trying to lean away from it, as needed as it was.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I kind of like having incentive stuff, but I understand where we're at.
We may have to ask you for it again, because they're still not growing on trees, there's still some staff shortages across the board in a lot of areas, we're not on.
And I guess, for the more general question, when you go to a contract with the staff, are we allowed to do this kind of stuff, to give bonuses or things like that to hard-able positions? Or is that a loaded question?
It's not a loaded question, the cool thing about, like, even with certified staff, I mean, the board can direct me, for example, to be able to allow to give like a hiring bonus, and that doesn't have to be negotiated. So, yeah, there are some opportunities to do that, and no, that stuff has to be necessarily negotiated. You just have to remember there's always a cost, like, in this case, $18,000, but not something that wasn't well spent, right? But, yeah, we can, you can direct me, and I got some stories, where I was able to do that, and it allowed me to get a staff member or two that I wouldn't have been able to have gotten otherwise, because they'll go to District B and they can make $2,000 more dollars, I just said, well, I'll give you a $2,000 hiring bonus, for example. And then at least I know it'll happen for a year, and because our culture will be so much better than District B, then they'll want to stay, you know, so you can get creative with that kind of stuff.
Is there any other questions, all those in favor? Six, zero. Free lunch program numbers.
We still have to approve the, not approve, we have to get free lunch numbers this next year, and to do that, they're not going to put out the free reduced lunch applications, okay? And I think, I put that in notes over the course of the sex, of the last several weeks, and only because we need to make sure that we get as much of a return on these applications as possible. They're allowing us to put out what they're calling a household economic survey, and that household economic survey, we can use that to serve as the proxy for the at-risk population, which would normally have been free lunches, all right? We lost over $200,000 this past year, because when, we lost about 90 students, we lost students anyway, because of the pandemic, all right? But we also lost 90 students from our free lunch count, which was a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's about 484 per F T E, for free F T E. So, just kind of tossing it around a little bit, the idea of, you know, if we gave people a $10 break on your textbook, so you can complete this household economic survey, even if you don't qualify for free lunch, obviously, it would take $10 off of your enrollment fee, off of your curriculum fee, and just to encourage families to do so. As David and I, as we went through the list of individuals, for example, that had unpaid bills, a lot of those individuals, like, had a lunch balance, okay, or pardon me, a textbook fee balance, but they didn't complete the consent form to qualify for the textbook waiver, all right? So, you know, we want to alleviate that kind of stuff as much as possible, and this would be another way in which we're doing it, we're providing that incentive, or we'll give you a reduction in your fees if you just complete the household economic survey. It's kind of hokey, not hokey, it's a little bit different, because it's not the free or reduced lunch form that you normally would have to fill out, right?
So what happened was, effectively, is if you can think back two years ago, a family would come in and fill out a free or reduced form, that would qualify them for free or reduced lunches. What happened when COVID came was, the federal government said, hey, all lunches are free. Well, the unintended consequence was, is those families no longer had the incentive to fill out the form and actually qualify, so that's how we got hit, those $200,000 losses. Frankly, families didn't feel the need to come do it, because, well, everybody's on free lunch, so why should I have to fill out a form? So we're trying to get people educated on, hey, there's more to it than just its name, it affects other things, and that, but that funding's important for districts and your students, and it helps keep the lights on, it helps provide a lot more than just necessarily a free school lunch. So this is kind of our way to say, okay, as you guys make those lunches are free again coming up this year, so what we're trying to do is make an incentive ourselves that says, hey, fill out this form, or we'll take $10 off your registration or whatever, your enrollment, and try to find that sweet spot, or it's, we're encouraging more people to fill it out, therefore getting more of that federal funding, but not paying out too much on our end, in terms of what we're providing as the incentive. So it is a little bit of a dance, but for sure, you can see the numbers there, those folks filling out those forms is important, so the people listening at home, it's important to fill out those forms, because it really is much more than just lunches, it's funding for the district, it's funding to provide the best quality of education that students can get.
What would you say to families who are concerned about the privacy piece of it and sharing some personal information? How would you ease their minds for that?
The same process that we use now for free and reduced, they determine that and how many new students. So, I mean, they sign the same confidentiality documentation that would be for the free and reduced lunch program. It's the same process, it's just a different process. And I've never heard of any issues with that, with that here, you know? And they don't have to do it, obviously, for those families that don't feel, they just wouldn't get a $10 break on their curriculum theory or technology.
And you and I visited in the past, that the $10 off is for families who don't qualify, but even families who aren't free or reduced, there are some fees associated with that just on a graduated scale, so everyone could benefit from this just by filling out this application.
Yeah, because, for example, it's a reduced technology fee, if I remember correctly, if they qualify for free lunch, so this would be another $10 off of that reduced technology fee if it's a seven from twelve kid, whether it is a technology.
We take $10 off some of them.
Yeah.
Everyone has some.
It's a $10 savings, right?
And, you know, those that would cost us would be around $45,000, the most it would cost us, okay? We have to get about 21 kids in order to break even, we lost 90 from our budget last year, so, you know, if you want to save $5, I'm okay with $5, I just, we just picked a number out to see if it would be helpful.
And like David was mentioning, the free lunch program is so much more than free lunches, because our title funding is tied to this, and I don't think people understand how much revolves around this, and my personal opinion, whether that's right or not, doesn't matter, that's just how the system works, so. Certain people that can help your kid in the classroom, there's so much tied to this, so highly encourage people to fill this out, it's beneficial far more than just food that you're talking about.
So like I said, this serves as the proxy for the state at-risk funding, this free lunch marker, the federal free lunch marker, serves as a proxy for the state at-risk, so the state at-risk dollars that we would not be giving, not federal dollars. And there's been some confusion out there, these dollars aren't used, you know, in any way to support lunch programs, they're used to support at-risk students, so.
I appreciate the simplicity of this form, because it's actually, the type of form that it is, it's very simple, and I love that, I think, you have to thought so much to get what people will get, so I think this is awesome.
Well, this is just for the economic survey, so, yeah, you've still got to deal with another component of it.
Yes. But this is, maybe it's small, and that's great.
This is the form released by the state, so this is the form that we would use for that.
So a number of families have already gone through the enrollment process online and filled out all of that information, so this will be coming out to families separately?
It will have to figure out a way best to do that, because nobody is paying you, so we'll have some sort of a process, I'm not sure if we can do this electronic, it's probably going to have to be a paper form, and then when they pay their fees, this can be included in the payment.
Sure. I know we signed a lot of information online for enrollment, but we have not paid yet.
Well, I don't think we're open to pay fees until you have.
Until you buy one, that's why we've got a little bit of time to put some processing into those things. That's why we've got a little bit of time to put some processes in the enrollments.
Okay. Thank you. Once again, another thing to quickly add on for your side. We have end-of-year building site council reports to read, if you so desire. Newton High School out-of-state contest.
These are the last forms that you guys will ever have from assistant principal Deets. There are, I believe, three trips. FFA leadership training, FFA national convention, and then the Disney World performance by a vocal music group.
It's nice to hear kids planning and staff planning to do these events and to those, and appreciation to the staff to take that on. We can, I'm sure I can do that, but.
That can still be added later, but.
I, I think this was the time we said they needed to request that. I mean, it was what, what Mr. Deets and, and Mr. Smith put out at the high school and we wanted to present to you guys. I, I'm not sure what the process has been in the past, Luke. If they, I'm sure that there have been some exceptions if there was another.
Typically, this is something that is, we receive in the fall for the next school year. But we put it on now for this, for the first trip that is coming up this summer. And then he added on two more for next year. So there could be maybe in the fall, more trips later into next year.
Our next item is review of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two handbooks. And those are classified staff, elementary and state-based student handbooks. And this is just for information.
The high school one, I believe, is going to be coming at the end of this month. Is that right, John?
Yes.
Should be the last one.
Are there any questions from this portion of the table? Okay, building and department reports are available. Please leave a comment or a comment.
It's super nice to see everybody's faces. Man, that's true. It's almost weird. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. A lot going on here. I have a lot to really digest. I've read this thing about three different times. Being a case manager myself and running around and working with kiddos and knowing how that system operates. Maybe I'll just have to take you to a coffee and talk a little bit. A lot of great things going on. Excited about this coming year. And I'm excited about the culture that we're building here, so. Congratulations to all of our staff, all our students, especially to the graduates and our retirees. Hope everybody's enjoying their summer.
I would just like to thank our staff that is still working over the summer and reading through some of these reports, especially our maintenance. Maintenance folks are doing a great job. Our food service working all the time with these extra meals every day. Staff that's coming in for trainings, it doesn't end over the summer for so many of you.